All right, Kim, you're ready? You're good?
Okay.
I'm just gonna need this for a minute. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting for this evening. Before I officially call it to order, I just want to run down our agenda for this evening. It's basically one order on the agenda tonight. And thank you to Kim in the booth from BevCam for being here, making sure that everything's being shown online and that people can follow it at home. A special thanks to Kim because he's been here with us every night this week so far. So, thank you. So, tonight we will be opening shortly a public hearing on Order 181, which are some proposed amendments to traffic and parking. Members of the public who are here or who continue to arrive or who are following on BevCam, just so that you know what the next step is, there is a sign-up sheet on the desk in front of me and Ms. Kent. Anyone can get up at any point and add your name to that if you have not already, and then we will be calling on speakers in order when we come to that part of the public hearing. And if you have not signed up when that part starts, but you change your mind as you're listening, you can still get up and sign up. So with that, I will officially call to order this special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Wednesday, June 29th, 2022, 6:30 PM. Ms. Kent, would you please call the roll? Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Hausmann?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
St. Holier?
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Sweeney, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sweeney. So, as we're beginning our public hearing, this order came to us, Mr. Mayor, and I should have said, our mayor, his honor the mayor is here with us, Mayor Cahill. This was an order that we received from the administration, so Mayor Cahill, I'm not sure if you or others from your team would like to start us off by talking a little bit about what we have in front of us.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. It's good to see you all again. You look fairly chipper and bright for all the late hours of this week. So, I'm going to give you a couple of thoughts and then turn it to Jesse Dole, Assistant City Solicitor, and then Lisa Chandler, Assistant City Engineer. So, what you've got is really a package of requests that have to do with parking. One has to do with parking in Beverly Farms, down around the Green Gate entryway into the Beverly Commons, and it is a result of a lot of attention paid to that, to those streets, which have found a lot of attention and interest in people walking, dog-walking, walking, jogging, hiking, biking in the woods there. And so, the key there is to try to make sure that we maximize parking opportunities while ensuring that it's always safe to move around in that neighborhood. And what you see before you is a request to have parking allowed, if you can picture Stone Ridge Circle, which is a little cul-de-sac next to the Green Gate, parking on the outside of the circle, no parking on the inside of the circle, and then the short stretch between Greenwood and Stone Ridge, between Greenwood and the circle, which is the beginning of Stone Ridge, no parking on the right going in, but parking allowed across along the curve that is next to the woods. Also, there's no parking either side from Stone Ridge down Greenwood to the intersection of Webster, and both Webster and Greenwood, from Webster down to Hart, are plenty wide and have a lot of opportunity for parking along either side. So, we think that that, and certainly from having been down and checked on it various times in recent weeks, we think that's handling the demand for parking, for people to go in and enjoy the woods, and it's working out well. We've done that, Chief Lasher's done that in an emergency setting, which is in his power to do it temporarily, and we're asking for these to be memorialized. Most of what we're talking about is in the downtown or on the Harborfront, so let me touch on, I'm going to leave some to our team here, but I'll just say that we've spent a lot of time over the last seven, eight months trying to ensure that there's safe and sufficient parking down by the anchor, down by where Rowan's was, for patrons of the businesses and for residents. And so, that's really what's before you, and again, I'll let the team walk through those things, except to add that we are looking now to do something that the ordinance has allowed since it was last worked on and passed with the new parking program, to put, we're going to put kiosks in the Harbor Master Lot and in the Creamery Lot, and a kiosk out along the, on the lawn at the corner of Cabot and the driveway into the under-the-bridge parking, so right across from where Rowan's was and is. So, those are things that are in front of you, but as I said, the ability to do that is already existing. What we're looking to do is now begin to enforce, in a very brief window of time, we're looking to do this on Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, because that is where the greatest demand is and will increase when the Harborfront Restaurant opens, which I think we all have heard, you know, they were hoping to open for summer, and I think at this point, they're probably not going to open until late in or after the mating season this year, but this is in anticipation of that as well. There is a request as well, the Engineering Department's spent a lot of time with this, to throughout the parts of the downtown where there are four-hour parking, it's essentially between Cabot and Rantoul, I think some down below Rantoul, where we have a combination of resident parking and non-resident for people who can park up to four hours. That's been a challenge, and the recommendation coming to you is to decrease that to two hours. Again, resident, residents of those neighborhoods can have passes and they can park there for longer, but for anyone else, it'd be two hours. I think, I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but they won't, so let me turn to Attorney Dole and then Lisa Chandler, Assistant Engineer. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dole, for being here with us.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. I may repeat some of what the mayor just described, but I'd just like to walk through the individual, kind of summarize the individual amendments. The easiest to describe are just some cleanup to, sort of characterizing and appropriately naming some of the areas down around the Congress Cabot Street Lot. There is a portion of Congress that was inaccurately labeled as Cabot in the ordinance that we've cleaned up. That's a very, that was sort of a, you know, a cosmetic fix, but as councilmen know, we do have the three zones that we've created in the downtown Beverly Parking District Ordinance. What is referred to as the green zone, which is the on-street parking, which is metered with the kiosks. We have the red-zone parking, which is primarily between Cabot and Rantoul. That is between the hours of 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM, resident-only, either resident only, and if you're not a resident with a permit, is currently capped at four-hour max. That, and then we have the blue designation, which is the off-street parking lots, so Pond Street, Washington, the Congress Cabot, and then the Glover-Worf Marina Lot. So, first addressing the so-called green zone, the metered zone, as the ordinance is currently written right now, we are permitted, the city is permitted to charge up to 75 cents an hour. The amendment would raise that up to amount to $1 to allow us to, it is currently charged at 75 cents an hour, but allow us if we, you know, when we make that decision to increase that rate to $1 per hour. Moving on to the so-called red zones, the resident zones, currently the ordinance is written to permit non-residents to park there for a maximum of four hours between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. What we found is it's an enforcement issue, and I think some non-residents sort of taking advantage of that time period, that portion of the ordinance has been amended to a maximum of two hours between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM to just allow the residents to have access to a little more parking, and also for the businesses downtown to encourage some turnover in the non-residents who park in those areas. Also, a very small change in that, in a red-zone area on Judson Street, currently the space in front of One Judson is a metered space. This would convert that space in front of One Judson to be a red-zone space, so it would be a resident-only, two-hour max for non-residents between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. The turning to the blue lots, the off-street parking lots, as some of you may know, we have started to allow some parking in the City Hall Lot on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays. The actual amendment to allow us to meter that, have that be a metered off-street parking lot, this amendment removes a separate ordinance addressing some rules about parking in City Hall Parking Lot, moves the City Hall Parking Lot into an official off-street parking lot that would allow us to install a kiosk and charge what is currently 25 cents an hour to use an off-street parking lot. It would allow Friday afternoon, 4:00 PM, when pretty much City Hall, official City Hall business has concluded, to charge a fee from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The reason for that, all as in the other City Hall lots, we charge from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So, end-of-business day on Friday till 8:00 PM, and then from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, it would be a pay kiosk, similar to any of the other city lots. All of our off-street parking lots are free on Sundays and holidays, that would apply to the City Hall Parking Lot also, and then, you know, we'd have to, anyone parking in that, in this lot, not for official City Hall business, would have to be up by midnight on Sunday to, just to ensure everyone's out of the lot by the start of business on Monday morning. As to the Glover-Marina-Worf Lot, AKA the Harbor Master Lot, and the spaces underneath the bridge, and then the Congress Cabot Lot, also known as the Creamery Lot, which predates my time in the city, those currently, as the ordinance was written when it was passed in 2017, those two lots are on the books as being a Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM pay off-street parking lot, although we have not, they're not kiosked and metered right now. What this ordinance, what this amendment would do would kind of pull them out from how the rest of the City Hall, the City off-street parking lots are treated, like, as I said, the Pond Street Lots, Washington Street, and no longer be a Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They would only be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, which is, was drafted to encourage turnover in those lots because of the use by, you know, the anchor, the Marina, the new restaurant on Water Street, and those would be, rather than the 25 cents an hour charge or fee for the other city lots, it would be a $1 an hour charge in those lots, and again, to encourage some turnover in those. We have, we... Let me recover. And as to those two lots, no longer having them be at 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM for Monday through Wednesday was to address some of the concerns of commercial fishermen, the recreational lessees of the Marina, people that go and use the waterfront for fishing out of the kind of recreational purposes, to allow them, I know, for example, if a fisherman's going out in a boat, you know, we don't want to be in a position where they're not going to be able to pay to use a space there. So, and then, in addition to that, the footprint that's underneath the bridge is actually not a, it's not city-owned property, city-owned real estate. It was actually part of the taking by the Department of Transportation in 1992, when they reconstructed the Beverly Salem Bridge. So, the city has an easement to that area underneath the bridge, and under the terms of the easement, which is under the terms of Mass DOT's waterways license, we're actually prohibited from charging a fee for those spaces just underneath the bridge as part of the easement. So, while we'll be able to charge for the spaces that are outside of the footprint under the bridge, on Cabot as it comes into the, towards the bridge by Rowan's, and then in what's the Harbor Master Building area, the spaces on the bridge, as the amendments are written, would allow us to at least time limit those during that 4:00, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM Thursday and Friday, again, to try to encourage turnover, just because of the number of people that will be parking in that area. There would be, just for a moment, and that would be, just that two-hour limit would just be for those two lots. Also, in that general area, the Congress Cabot Lot, if you're familiar with the area, Summit Ave, if you're standing at the lot, Summit Ave is one way going uphill. What we try to do for the residents in that area is we've added a section of Summit to the red-zone resident-only designation. So, there's about eight spaces, I believe, on the west, or if you're looking uphill, left side of Summit Ave, which would be, just like any of the other red zones in downtown, it would be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, it would be resident-only sticker parking, a maximum of two hours for non-residents. Again, let's give a little bit of a relief valve to the residents on Summit Ave, so... And the mayor did, I think, more than adequately describe Greenwood Ave and Stone Ridge Road. The amendment's out there. If anyone has any questions about those, I can answer them, but in a nutshell, that's a summary of the amendments. They are in various sections of the ordinances. Some of the amendments are to remove, mention of some of these areas that are not in the downtown Beverly Parking District Ordinance, and then add them to the downtown Beverly Parking Ordinance. So, if you have any additional questions, and I should actually backtrack a bit, the amendments that you have before you, as to the Congress Cabot Lot and the Glover-Worf Marina Lot, as the amendment is written, it is written as a Monday through Saturday, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we would welcome a friendly amendment to change that Monday through Saturday to a Thursday through Saturday. That, and further discussion since filing of the order, that seemed more appropriate under the circumstances, based on some of the feedback that we've been getting. So, I should have mentioned that at the time that I talked about those two lots, but as I said, as amendment is written, it's Monday through Saturday, I'd welcome a friendly amendment to make that Thursday through Saturday. And if the council has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dole. Counselor Rotundo, let's go to you.
Madam Chair, Mr. Dole, I know you just stated about a friendly amendment for the hours for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, negating that 4:00 to 8:00 and replacing that, but I did get some phone calls in regards to that particular part, when I had mentioned it, and they kind of said, have you been down there on a Tuesday or Wednesday night? It's just as busy, so why would we even consider doing that? So, I just want to kind of, from what I've heard from people, is why not just keep it Monday through Saturday? And I understand where you got, where the ask is coming from, but from what I was talking to some of the people down in the Marina area, it didn't make sense to them to remove that, which was surprising to me, though it didn't seem like to encourage it.
I stepped over here because I didn't want to subject Mr. Dole to this. It's a little bit, it's a little bit unscientific, it's a little bit of a feel, right? So, we're looking to, we're looking to restrict as little as possible down there, and so that's why we were looking initially at Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which are the biggest, you know, dinner-night-out nights. You know, we frankly, we didn't intend to submit it as Monday through Saturday, that was more of a, you know, just a kind of editing error, but if you folks, and you know, really think about this, if you want to leave it as it's drafted as Monday through Saturday, it's our intention to, when we begin to enforce, to go Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we can watch, and, you know, and we can always expand out the enforcement, if you want to leave it as drafted. So, but you know, this, I figured that there was going to be some kind of back and forth about just exactly how the wording should read on this point and maybe others.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. So, that's what I was going to go at, what you just said, is at least in the meantime to keep it as a trial pair, because regardless, it's busy right now with or without the new restaurant, it's a busy area on Tuesday and Wednesday, what we're currently seeing. So, even if we have the increase with the new restaurant, it's still busy regardless. So, I'm not saying that it's not something to remove in the future, but at least maybe keep it as a trial in the meantime, and we know it's already metered from 8:00 to 8:00 PM technically on the ordinance, we just haven't enforced it or physically put the kiosks.
Right.
But maybe at least if the idea is to encourage the turnover of the parking spaces, maybe at least consider it for now, and that's just a suggestion that was made from conversations with some of the customers down in the Marina area.
I would say, Madam President, that, you know, if the way it's drafted is good with you, we would begin with Thursday through Saturday and have that flexibility. One thing that, as I said, we're trying to be as least restrictive as we can be, recognizing that we've got a good-sized commercial fleet that goes out, and, you know, they may largely park under the bridge, but not entirely, and then we have recreational boaters who, you know, that's more seasonal, and so, we're really just looking to the busiest times, and that would give us that flexibility to monitor it, monitor it as we start, and not be overly restrictive, and we don't have to be, in terms of when we would charge and enforce, and in the case of the under-the-bridge parking time limit during those hours.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Rand?
Thank you so much. I have a couple of questions and just a comment first to follow up on Counselor Rotundo's question and your responses. Mayor, depending on what we hear tonight from the public that's here, I'm more comfortable with easing into the restrictions in parking. I know the ordinance has been in place for some time to charge and put kiosks in that area, in the Congress Street and Creamery Lot, but I don't know, I think it's going to be an adjustment, and I support moving in increments towards that adjustment, but like I said, depending on what we hear tonight, I'm happy to listen to other ideas. I did want to ask, and I think you just mentioned this, that the parking time limit under the bridge, I hear it will be free, but so is the time limit, the two-hour limit only between 4:00 and 8:00? Okay, thank you. And then, I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yes, it is.
So, I know part of this ordinance allows for employees of businesses that are located in downtown Beverly to apply for a permit as well. I'm not sure if this will even be helpful or not, but are you counting fishing boats as downtown Beverly businesses? Just kind of thinking, I know there's available free parking for all of the fishing boats now, but I'm sort of just thinking ahead and also anticipating if there are issues, if this is, if that's kind of one way to...
Yeah. Hadn't been considering that, or thinking of it that way. We'd been looking at the, you know, a couple of things. One is, in working with the Harbor Management Chair and Vice Chair, and Sean Sansarelli from Engineering, we're getting a meeting together with the commercial fishermen to talk through, you know, who goes out when, and who might expect to be out during any of the times where we would start to time-restrict under the bridge, in hopes of, you know, not being troubling to their schedules, and we certainly don't want, you know, we don't want our commercial fishermen, nor do we want our recreational boaters to, you know, be frustrated with getting tickets, and yet, you know, we've got to have a basic set of ground rules. So, had not been thinking about that concept of an employee pass with the commercial fishermen, understanding that for the most part, they go out early and are back by mid to late afternoon, but knowing that that's not something that we should just assume and count, and we've got to get a little more granular with that. So, I hope that answers. The only other thing I want to say before any more questions is, do you want to hear from Ms. Chandler, because she's got more of the information, and she was also to present. Can we do that and then go back to Counselor?
Absolutely. Yes. Ms. Chandler, please. I also just wanted to mention, as Ms. Chandler's coming up to the podium, that our Planning Director Darlene Nguyen is also here with us. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for being here. Thank you, Ms. Chandler.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I am Lisa Chandler. For those that don't know me, I am the Assistant City Engineer. I have been with the city now for five years. I was responsible for the initial implementation of the downtown parking program, so I'm sorry, but that's my fault. I also kind of oversee enforcement, so enforcement falls within engineering, so all of the downtown enforcement also kind of comes through our office, so we're familiar with kind of the headaches and the ins and outs and all the intricacies of the program itself. And to somewhat answer the question about parking programs, so the mechanism already exists, so if we were to decide to go that route, it would be easy to just amend how that would work for this downtown area. We currently have to expand the program to include the downtown area, so it includes the reprogramming of all of the enforcement kind of backend system to recognize cars down there. We have to program the new kiosks. We do have three kiosks in hand, they are in storage at DPW, so it's just a matter of getting them programmed with the correct information and installed on the street by Public Services. A number of signs have to go up, a number of just kind of notifications have to go out, weeks of warning periods of not actually ticketing people, just alerting people that changes are being made, things of that nature. So, it's not an overnight process, it is many weeks away from actually being implemented. We have, the Park Beverly website is currently a wealth of knowledge, all of this would be plastered all over that as well, of all the changes and all of the rates and how to find where you're going and parking and all of that nature. We mentioned that we are going to be expanding the residential zone on Summit Ave. It would allow for residents of both Summit and Cox Court to apply for permits that would be able to be parked on Summit Ave. We couldn't just restrict it to Summit just based on how parking exists down there. It's a simple process, you go through an online portal, it's existed elsewhere in the city for the four years now. Very little headaches, as far as I know, they're good for a year, they're free to residents. If your car is registered in Beverly, it's even easier, you don't even have to upload any kind of documentation, you just get pushed through. In terms of changing from four hours to two hours, that's a loophole that we kind of discovered as the program's gone on, so it implemented in 2018. We've had kind of three and a half, almost four years of seeing how it works, seeing where the flaws are, seeing where we kind of need to button things up. One of them was that, yes, some people have caught on to the fact that you could park for four hours and then move your car, and then get another four hours and then move your car, and all it takes is for you to slide one forward, or you and your coworker both go out at the same time and just swap where your cars are parked, and then get four hours of free parking. So, we think that by buttoning that down to two hours, it'll actually eliminate a lot of those problems that we've been seeing from enforcement. One other thing that I don't know that we mentioned necessarily, Margin Street and River Street, which is currently identified in the parking plan as purple-zone parking, is actually going to change to green-zone parking. It's going to be an even rate, so it kind of makes it a little easier on the enforcement side to not have quite as many different zones that they're trying to enforce for. It takes a very long time to enforce and drive around and change where you're looking and change what the rules are. So, it occurs, I think it's four parking kiosks will be updated, and it's about 25 to 30 parking spaces, so that'll be absorbed into the green zone and then the purple zone will kind of go away. I might use the color purple for the waterfront, I haven't decided yet, I got to make the signs, but from a technical standpoint... standpoint, the parking is designed with different zones to encourage turnover at higher rates. The parking lots are a cheaper rate because it's intended for more long-term parking. Street parking was intended just to have patrons of businesses coming in and doing their business and leaving again. So it's charged a higher rate because we want to open up the parking in front of the businesses just to be available for those that would like to do it. And if you want to work a little further, you could save a little bit of money and park in a public lot when it's available. One thing to note with that parking program for the businesses, you're not guaranteed a spot with a business pass. It just gives you the option, if a parking spot is available, to be parked in the lot and not be subject to any of the time limits or restrictions. So, any future kind of pass like that would operate under the same kind of purview. I think that's it. From a technical standpoint, I'm happy to answer any actual technical questions or if you have questions on how enforcement works or could work. Unfortunately, I'm quite familiar with that as well, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chandler. Councilor Rand, why don't we go back to you? And, and then we'll go to other councilors as well. And I think any of the team that's here, as appropriate, can respond to councilors' questions. And that's probably the best way to go. Councilor Rand, back to you.
Thank you. And I did, I wanted to make the comment also that I, I think that restricting the, the sort of parking enforcement from four to eight in the waterfront area is a very thoughtful compromise that does support the activity that's currently functioning down there now. I think it is a compromise and will be for some of the businesses. Still challenging, but I, I think that is a good start. And you actually answered my question. I was going to ask if Cox Court could use the residential pass on Summit. I would also consider it, or ask if Cox Court can use a residential pass like that on School Street. I don't know if that's what's part of the conversation.
We don't currently have School Street included as part of the red zone. That's definitely something we could consider if we activate this and start noticing that it's pushing certain spaces out further. It's definitely kind of a wait and see approach. It's easy enough to program it as such and get it added, but it's not currently included as being expanded into the red zone.
Yeah, I think, I, I can see why it isn't. It's a little bit tricky. It's not coming up against a ton of businesses, but there is just, Cox Court is, and Summit Ave, both are pretty tricky spots in terms of parking and off-street parking and also just density. So I think that allowing the Summit Ave parking will be a really good first step and a huge help, especially to the people who are in lower Cox Court. And then I have another question just on what you are thinking about whether the, the off-street lots will have enough spaces to support cultural and nightlife activity when the, there's the reduction, the time limit for the, from the four to the two hours. Have you, what you've observed in the past couple of years on terms of nightlife and things like that?
So it's hard to tell exactly where people are headed when they're parked in certain areas. So, I mean, the, the public lots are still available and you could park until eight P M. After eight P M., there's no enforcement, so it's whoever is parked wherever. Honestly, our biggest observation is during the day is that workers at downtown businesses, rather than paying for the permit to be parked in the public lots, are just bypassing that system, parking in the four-hour parking, moving their car every four hours so that they don't have to pay for the parking pass to be parked in the lots. And then currently, there's nothing to stop you from just rolling your car one space forward or swapping with a coworker and things like that. So, again, it wouldn't be perfect, but it should cut down on quite a bit of that behavior to open the parking back to residents, which is what the intention always was, or for people coming and doing stuff quickly or running in and out and things like that. There seems to be, I mean, a lot of times during the day, there is quite a bit of availability in the public lots. Nighttime and weekends are a little different, but there's nothing preventing people from purchasing business passes and utilizing the public lots as they were intended. So, obviously, we will wait and see and observe even more. And if we're finding that the two hours is causing issues elsewhere, we can always revise how, what our strategy is. But the four-hour lot is quite a bit of time to do things that were not what the intention of the program was.
Right. That seems like a positive correction to the system as well. And I just wanted to say also, thank you for dealing with that one spot on Judson Street. I think that's a good move. And I know Judson Street residents will feel the positive effect of that. And I think just to kind of clarify my thought process on considering, sort of, considering designating fisher, fishermen and boats that are going out of the wharf as downtown businesses. I mean, I think clearly it would probably make more sense if it was like a downtown waterfront business designation. But, and my line of thinking is more around the, the free parking under the bridge. And I know we're not charging for that, but I'm wondering if still some type of permitting process to say, these are, these are employees, these are businesses, they need to be here, they have a sticker, they're, I mean, I know there's no, still no guarantee for a space, I guess, but that's just sort of my mind, that, that's part of my thought process, where I was really kind of just thinking about future, when it's even busier down there, maybe we can kind of consider another designation for downtown waterfront businesses.
So, Councilor...
So I guess now, I just said that aloud, and then I just pictured like a hundred restaurant employees. So I'm not talking about those employees.
No, no.
It's tricky. It's a tricky problem. And I, I think a lot of this has gone in the right direction, so.
And, and if you remember, when it comes to the restaurant that we'll be opening as part of that whole process, you remember Mr. Bloom made commitments to,
Right.
to get off-site parking for employees of, of his restaurant. So that's important. I just say, I mean, I, I understand what you're thinking.
Yeah.
To date, I don't believe our commercial fishermen have, have had problems getting spaces, in large part based on when they go out. But, I mean, now that we've opened this ordinance up, you know, we're requesting some things tonight. That's not to say we can't together work on more, you know, more tweaks and improvements and adjustments. You know, it just, it takes what it takes, right, in terms of bringing forward and holding a hearing. So, I mean, it, it can, as we're sorting through this and figuring it out, it can become, you know, more of a living document, right? And, and I'm happy to work, you know, with you on any of that, as I know, you know, our, our various departments and staff are. So, thanks.
Thank you. And I guess just one more follow-up is, just to say that I think overall, this, it, it's really reassuring to me to see this ordinance opened up again, because it, when the, when we first were making these changes, I feel like it was a slightly different council, but we relied heavily on the fact that we could come back to it and revisit. So I think some of the things for future to revisit are just checking in with our, you know, our fleet of boats that go out at Congress, at Glover Wharf. And then also, when the restaurant does go in, make, being mindful of the need to potentially create more residential parking zones. So, and I know those are sort of future things, but I just want to thank you for opening this ordinance up again in general, and definitely fixing some of the things that have been problems over the past couple of years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Rand. Councilor St. Hilaire?
So I had some questions and comments on three different aspects: Beverly Farms, the Marina, and City Hall. So if it's all right, I'll start with maybe just quickly on Beverly Farms. I just want to thank the mayor and Attorney Dole for addressing the parking issues up there. As, as the mayor said, folks have discovered one of the great jewels of our city, Beverly Commons, over the last couple of years with COVID. It's been a lot of, a lot of parking issues up in that area. And appreciate making, you know, a lot of these work to temporary restrictions now permanent. Spoken with several of the neighbors and they're very happy with this. I guess the question I had is, one of the issues up there has been the usage of the Glen Ercart School parking lot. Is there any, any comments or thoughts? I know it's not city-owned, we don't have the, you know, but is there any, anything to say on that topic?
Yes. The, the folks at Glen Ercart were approached a couple of years ago by some of the local mountain bikers. And, and they, you know, they struck an agreement to say you can park in here. And that eased some of the crunch up around the circle at Stone Ridge. Unfortunately, behavior in the parking lot was, you know, made, made it, made for an untenable situation for neighbors. And there were warnings given to the mountain bike community and it didn't work. And I'll say that, I would say the local mountain bike community got it and wasn't part of the problem, but people come here from, you know, they, they know, they know the trails are out there. And so we finally just said, you know, neighbors shouldn't have to put up with this. We're done. And so the, and it, it's done. And the, you know, the administration of Glen Ercart have been great neighbors and, you know, to, to, to try it out. But now, yeah, no longer any parking there. And so now the parking is all out on public ways. And people, you know, people that don't behave on a public way, and in some of the ways they were misbehaving, you know, in the lot, they, you know, we, we have remedies.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that update for addressing that issue. So I did want to touch on the, the Marina area and the down, and the restaurant. And just taking a step back from a big picture, you know, obviously, the goal here is with the new restaurant opening up, creating more turnover during the weekends at night and evening. Just curious, you know, you know, thinking about this from, I guess, a data point of view, what is our current capacity down there? What do you anticipate the need being? Does this, do these changes address that? And, you know, I guess, if you could remind me, did, did the restaurant have any dedicated spaces and how many?
Yes. So, the zoning, whether or not you believe that the, the zoning provides sufficient parking, the zoning is one parking space per four seats in a restaurant. The number of spaces in the McDonald's lot, or I guess we'll start calling it the Mission Boathouse lot eventually, right? I believe it's 62. And then the number of additional spaces between the Harbor Master lot and under the bridge has been, I think, always estimated or counted out at about 40. And so, they had, they had more than the required parking under the zoning, when you look at it, what's available, or can be pointed to, right, under our zoning. We've known, and they've known all along, that, you know, finding parking is, is critical. So a part of that was, as I said, the commitment of Mr. Bloom to parking his staff offsite. And if, if you remember, he ended up making a, an agreement with Brian Kelly for some, for some parking up on Beaumac Road. Now, he may choose, he may look around for closer, you know, closer by space. And I know he actually is. But he did, he got that in place so as to be able to show. And so, you know, that's important. And we're, we're going to, you know, follow up on that. We also have been trying to, you know, find more parking. We spent much too long with the MBTA, thought we had a, an agreement for about 18 spaces along the train tracks. And then at the end of that process, they insisted that we indemnify them against anybody discovering environmental contamination on the site. So that, you know, contamination that, that they, that they or somebody else may have, you know, committed years and years ago. So unfortunately, that went by the boards. We have in this proposal identified, no, we haven't created it out of thin air. People have been parking, it's been problematic, the parking down around the bottom of Summit and along that little stretch of cabot between the on-ramp to the bridge and the train tracks, because there's been, there's been, you know, too much cramming in of cars in, in the busy evenings where it's not safe. So, what you see in this proposal here, as I said, it doesn't create them out of thin air, but it, it identifies and formalizes 18 to 20 spaces that are, you could call additional, because they haven't been identified in our inventory. And that's on the, along the curb coming out from under the bridge towards the stop sign. So essentially a cross from Rowan's. And then on, on both sides of that stretch of cabot. And then the ones that we talked about, the, the eight going up the, along the side of Summit. So that's about 18 to 20 there. We have been looking for access to additional parcels to create some more spaces, and we keep doing that. We'll continue doing that. We, we think we have a bead on, on some right now. But we can keep that, we can keep that update going. Do you want to move to City Hall?
Yeah, I guess my comment on City Hall was just, you know, I have a concern about this being a public building. People come here to do public business. We have meetings all at night, city council meetings every night.
[Laughter]
And other, other boards and commissions. So, you know, just curious to learn more about what you're planning there. And
Yeah.
I would be generally opposed to people having to come to pay to park here to, to do business with us.
Right. So, I think it would, it's the very rare occurrence that there'd be a Friday night meeting. We did, when, the term I was on the city council, council, who was, who was with me? 2010, 2011? We, we had a Friday night meeting because we had some business on a Wednesday, on a Tuesday or Wednesday night that didn't get finished, and we needed 48 hours. But for the most part, the meet, the meetings are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday that happen here. So we felt it was safe to say, you know, the building closes officially at one on Friday. A lot of employees are here well beyond that. But we felt safe to say four P M. on Friday through midnight on Sunday, the public should have access. We know, we know we always need more parking. And I've been in here many a weekend, parking in, you know, one of the spots here to go get dinner. And look, there's nobody else in the lot. And people just, you know, there's an old, old kind of dim, a little rusted sign that says City Hall Parking Only. We, so we want to take that down and get signage that says, look, from four Friday to midnight Sunday, get in here and use it. We, you know, people will be able to benefit from having access to it.
I mean, I do recall just this last year, we had an election here. Early voting was here. And so I guess we would have the ability to waive it, right, if, if needed.
Oh, because we had early voting on a Saturday? Yeah, yeah. I mean, absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, we can put special signage up. We can do a reverse 911 call. Yeah. You're, you're right. There'll be, there'll be a, a very irregular, very, what, infrequent time when we need the spaces on a weekend or outside of hours like that. And, and absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll set Councilor St. Hilaire?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from councilors at this point? Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. I had some of the same questions, so can skip ahead. But just one follow-up on that last line on City Hall Parking. Is there some thought to just reserving some staff parking at all times so that staff always have a place to park if there's business for them to conduct or, you know, for members of the public? So there's sort of some spaces that are set up that way?
I, I mostly don't want to see our staff in here on the weekend. But I would, I would, I would think that by and large, there are going to be spots available in here, except maybe on a Saturday night between six and, you know, dinner and a show crowd, right? So I'm, I'm less concerned about it. Yeah.
And it, it sounds like with all of these changes, it would be possible to stop enforcement temporarily if there were an issue, or, or revisit if you're observing things that weren't anticipated, that we weren't worried about now, but that happened.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. I mean, this, we're, you know, we, we won't know how this all works until we try it. But you're right. I mean, you know, we, we don't want unintended consequences to be problematic. And so, you know, we, we can certainly use our judgment and pull back from some things as needed. Right?
And then I had a sort of general question for approaches to encouraging turnover and sort of lessening the impact of what we're expecting to be additional parking. In parallel with this proposed ordinance change, are there any other plans for down at Marina or, or downtown for, for their increasing bike and walking infrastructure?
Yes.
I know that the parking arrangement for the employees of the restaurant, at, at one time, the conversation included running a shuttle to the MBTA garage for employees and/or potentially patrons. Are those sorts of things also in the works?
Yeah. Well, I mean, to the restaurant, he needs to run a shuttle if he's having, he's going to have employees parked further away. And he talked about the ability to use that shuttle for, you know, to pick up people at the depot, to pick up somebody, you know, to pick up customers as well. So, I mean, we'll see how that works. As far as... As far as biking infrastructure, we, we have installed a good number of brand-new bike racks on Rantoul Street. And we've got some ready to go on Cabot. And Ms. Keefe is going to be walking the team at Main Streets and some of the biking members through the proposed spots for those. And so those should be going up soon. About over 30 new bike racks. And they're all, they're all the, you know, those racks that would take two bikes at a time. We have more on order for some of the parks. You know, I want us to get to where people are biking downtown, you know, they're flocking downtown by bikes. And we need to take some parking spaces and turn them into, you know, to bike parking areas. And so we're trying to encourage that. And, you know, that goes with everything we can do to make walking and biking routes safer. And that, you know, that's the complete street concept. We've been trying to embrace it. We've been trying to work thoughtfully. You folks, you know, passed a, well, we collectively brought forward a bike plan, right? And I'm trying to remember exactly. You passed a bike resolution and you passed the bike plan. And, you know, we all try to work closely with our bike committee, who are fantastic. So, yeah, I think, have you been to Sausalito? A couple of years ago, I was at a conference in San Francisco. So I rented a bike and pedaled across the Golden Gate Bridge and ended up in Sausalito. And I was blown away because I had this big bike parking area, this free bike parking area where you lock up. So I, whoops, took the rented bike, put it there. And then I walked a little further and there was a paid bike parking area. Paid because they had staff to be, you know, be there to make sure nobody vandalized or stole any of the bikes. And it was, you know, it was a downtown that was not really larger than ours. There was a culture there that just is wonderful about biking. So, yeah, I'd love to get there.
Couple more, if I may. Thank you. And I think any place where we're trying to manage parking, it would be great if, you know, people who pull up in a car, can't find a space, but see a well-used bike rack, are going to think about maybe using the bike rack next time. So the more we can incorporate those things at the same time, I think, the better. Was also wondering about the employee pass program. It sounds like one of the reasons that people were finding an alternative means of parking was the cost. So curious if you looked at reducing that cost? I know when we talked about parking in the budget hearings, we heard how really a lot of, as you said, a lot of it is to manage turnover and demand and behavior, not really as a revenue generator. So if that would draw some people into the lots, would be worth exploring.
It's $25 a month. That's based on what it would cost you to pay for a meter for the time. In my opinion, it is not nearly high enough. But obviously, free is always better. So I can understand the sentiment. So at 25 cents an hour, to be able to park from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, costs you $3 a day. And then times five days a week, times four weeks a month is, I don't know, more than $25. So you get a discount on the $25. And that also gets you on weekends and nights and overnight and everything else. So you're, you're making out like a banshee if you're just spending the $25. We are proposing to raise the rates of the lot itself to 50 cents an hour, but we are not proposing to raise the rate of the employee pass. So now you're making out even better because you're only paying $25 for a month and you're still not having to pay anytime you want to come do business, regardless of if you're going to work or not, because it's tied to your license plate. So we have not begun to think about, and honestly, problems with abusing the four hours seem to have become very prevalent as COVID started, more people were home and not necessarily leaving and doing things. So it was just a, oh, all I have to do is shift my car six inches forward and I won't have to spend money on the pass anymore. So we have seen a decrease in people that used to bypasses, that no longer bypasses because they realized that they could just move their cars and not have to deal with it. So, yeah, I mean, if you were to pay in the parking lot, you would be paying a lot more than the $25 a month.
Understood.
If I could just add-
And I think it's, you know, during COVID, a lot of people have also experienced more of a financial crunch. So, you know, going back out every four hours and timing that and moving your car is no small thing either. It's an annoyance. So if people are making that trade-off because the money is that important to them, even if it's already a great deal, I think it could be worth just exploring, given that our whole goal is to sort of manage the impacts for businesses and for residents of a dense area. And if there are always spots open in the lot at the times we want people to use them, removing any barriers to that behavior, even creating incentives for that behavior rather than making it more difficult, even though it's already at a discount, I'd be interested in exploring further.
If I could just add to Ms. Chandler's point, you know, in an average month, there are, what, about 22 workdays, roughly? And so if that's your monthly cost of $25, it's about a dollar a day. You know, in the lot, in the lot, you'd be paying $8 at a quarter of an hour. You might be paying $16 if you folks approved this increase in the lots to 50 cents an hour. I mean, it's a great deal. There are employers who are subsidizing those costs for some employees. Not, you know, not all of them do. But I understand, there's a tug and a, you know, there's all of that with all this stuff. And we, we spend a lot of time trying to get that price point right at the outset. And we think it's been fairly well subscribed. And we know some people are choosing not to do it. And they just, you know, they're taking advantage of the free spaces. And anyway, you know, there's not a, there's not a bright line, right answer to it. But, you know, we're trying to manage it. Thanks.
And then just a couple more. Just to make sure I got them all. Oh, around the Commons. I'm also one of those people that had not spent a lot of time there until I was trapped inside for so long. And actually found it difficult to know where best to enter from and park. And, you know, just curious, especially with the changes and knowing the impact on neighbors, if there's anything we can do to make it easier for people to know what their options are coming from different directions? Again, with the sort of making routes easier to access without a car? Because not all of the sidewalks, I think, are even in existence in that neighborhood. Just to, again, sort of make, make it easier for people now that usage is up to know how to do it right so that they're not, like me, finding themselves in the neighborhood driving around being like, now, what are the parking restrictions here? So it's maybe more of a communications than parking ordinance question. But particularly for that really valuable resource, would love to see what we could do.
Let me, let me get back to you on that, councillor. I think, because I'd want our recreation team here to speak to that. We, you know, we do, we do have information about a number of our parks and our, you know, our open spaces. And so let's take a look. But I will get, I'll get something to Mrs. Kent for you all, just, just on that question and that point. Because, you know, we want people to park in the available parking around Stone Ridge. We want them to park on Lower Greenwood, you know, below Webster. We wanted to park along Webster. And that makes for plenty of opportunities. At the other end of the Commons, you can walk in, bike in from Stanley Street. And there's a right-of-way into the woods, you know, skirting the Waring property. There also is parking for about four cars at that, at that point on Stanley Street. So those are, you know, those are kind of two opposite ends of getting into those properties.
Thank you. And then the, oh, the last question, I think, unless, I don't know if they're, okay. Was just for something of this magnitude, more for the downtown proposals than the Commons proposal. I was just curious where this stood with Park, Parking and Traffic Commission review? Is that typically done before or after a public hearing? When would that come into play? Because I would love to hear from experts who are talking to these neighbors more frequently than I am about parking and traffic and how it ties into all the plans they've already reviewed and have.
So, you know, we reviewed the Parking and Traffic ordinance. I mean, you folks can refer anything to them. There's not a requirement that something like this go to them, either before or after you see it. But, you know, within your own discretion, you can certainly do that. I will say that the work that was done around all the parking on Summit and down around, you know, around the harbor front area, Chief LaLasher, Sergeant Heneberry, the whole engineering department, Commissioner Collins, Ms. Nguyen, not initially, but was brought into it. And, you know, several of them sit on the Parking and Traffic. That doesn't mean the whole, you know, the whole roster of the Parking and Traffic Commission was involved. But, you know, as I said, that's really, you know, whether you bring them in at some point is within your own discretion.
Thanks. So I think I would just say, from my perspective, I would like us to refer it to the Parking and Traffic Commission for input, whether that's, whatever sort of input that could be. Obviously, we're doing a public hearing to hear directly from residents. So we wouldn't want to replicate that process again. But particularly to hear from the non-city staff, members of the Traffic Commission, since we have the city staff perspective here.
So I think councillor Bowen, you can hold on to that. And after the members of the public speak, you can decide if that's a motion you would like to put on the table. Councillor Housman, I saw your hand earlier.
Yes, all of my questions have been, have been already addressed, with the exception of one.
And you should ask that one.
I fully intend to.
But only that one. I'm just kidding.
And I'm not sure if this is best directed to the mayor or Ms. Nguyen. I'm interested to know, I haven't taken a look at the plans, but it appears from the newspaper article that the proposed development behind the Dollar Store would impact parking. And so my first question is, would it? Am I right? And if it, and if it were, if it does, you know, if it were to be approved, what kind of impact would you anticipate that having on, you know, this discussion in general? Because I think part of the notion here is that we want people to use the lots that are presently back there.
Yes, councillor. As you point out, that lot is one we've used for a long time. We've had a lease arrangement with the Dana family that owns the parcel. And with the proposal that is coming forward from the team that's trying to develop it, they would take all that parking for their own needs.
All of it?
All of it.
And how many spaces?
Roughly, uh, uh-oh. Come on over, Ms. Nguyen.
Ms. Nguyen, if you could come over to the podium, please, for the fans on Bev Camp.
Charlie, we're planning director. All of it, meaning the parcel is not the entire block. So that you know, the development parcel. I think it's just important to make that distinction. But the parcel that relates to that development, they would take all of that parking. So there is a couple of parcels on the outside, the Foulun and then the coastal windows and, and the bank. Those parking spaces belong separately. They're different parcels. But the parcel that relates to the development project, they would take all of those parking spaces.
And?
Those are the ones that are the public parking spaces.
Yeah.
Yes.
Keep saying seven.
How many spaces is that, roughly?
100, 100 parking spaces.
100 parking spaces, which would be removed from this inventory.
Correct.
And then in addition to that impact, presumably the people who might live in this development would also want parking. Is the proposal?
The development has its own, meets its own parking requirement. The proposed development, as it stands, has been submitted, meets the parking requirements under the zoning. So they would provide parking. The parking would become private parking.
And there would be a 100% unity between the lots, parking spaces that they use and the ones that they would remove so that there would be no difference in number? In other words, they wouldn't be looking to use any public spaces in addition to what they are, would be removing from the inventory?
So the lot that we're all thinking of as, that we've been using, right, as Ms. Nguyen points, Ms. Nguyen points out, doesn't include the two parcels on either side, on the corner of Federal and on the corner of Bow, but everything in between. They also own the lot across Chapman Street that's tucked in, but in front of, at the corner of the, of the stop sign at Federal. They own that lot as well. So that together is a total of about 100 spaces. If I remember the numbers, they're trying to build 113 units and they're required to provide 153 parking spaces. And that's what they have in their proposal. Now, we're working with them. We have been for a while. And we're not giving up on the thought that there's a way to, on that site, recreate or create more parking than they're going to need. And, you know, if we're successful in that, that would likely involve a public-private partnership to, in fact, do that. And so we've talked, I think, more generally about, you know, the need to begin to spend public dollars on parking in Beverly. This, you know, we'll see, but we're not giving up on the thought that we might be able to work something with them to, you know, claw back some of that parking, if not all.
Is there, can they develop what they're proposing to do as a matter of right? Or?
They, I'll let Ms. Nguyen explain because she's the planning expert, but the short answer is-
Yeah, I'm just, if the short answer is just yes, I'm, you know, we're in negotiations, it's always helpful to have-
They have submitted an application that they believe to be a buy rights site plan review application. It, on face, looks like that meets that. That they can provide the necessary 153 parking spaces within the site. They are allowed to take credit for on-street parking spaces for commercial use. And, but the majority, the primary balance of the residential, well, all of the residential parking spaces are provided within the site on the ground floor, according to the proposal they've submitted.
And I guess what the mayor is alluding to is maybe creating some kind of parking garage quasi, something, structure that would enable us to sort of preserve some of what we're talking about that we'd otherwise lose.
Additional.
Yes. And so that's where, when we talk about these 31 spaces, this is something that we can long-term make available to the public. When we talk about some of the agreements, the licenses we've signed in recent weeks to try to get us through the solar canopy construction in the 10 and 11 Ponsby. So we have an agreement with the, with the church, the Catholic church, to get a net, net gain of about 15 spaces in the St. Mary's Schoolyard for the next several months. An agreement with Monarch for use of 35 spaces until December. You know, some of these are near-term to help us with this. We'll be looking for similar near-term help next spring when the, when the, you know, hopefully when the library parking lot is, is under construction for geothermal. So some of this is near-term and then some of it has got to be longer term. And, you know, our ability to do something with this developer to not lose those 100 spaces on the Dollar Store property is very important. So we're not giving up on that. They're, to date, they've been good to work with. And they, you know, they've expressed more than once that they're amenable to trying to help us figure that piece out.
So just one follow-up question.
And councillor Housman, yes, I'm just going to ask that after this one, that we move on from this, only because the folks, the public's waiting to speak. I know councillor Rand has a question. I'm just a little concerned we're getting a little far afield from what I understand. It's all downtown parking. But I just want us to try to stay to the, to the hearings so we can get to the public.
I'd like to stay on topic.
I would. I would love to.
So my, my follow-up question really is, if we're not able to preserve that parking, how's, how's it going to impact this plan that's in front of us in terms of employee parking, resident? I mean, there's going to be a displacement of parking due to an absence of parking. And has that been taken into account in this proposal? Or is it considered contingent and therefore not incorporated into this plan?
I thought that's where you were headed. So that's a good question to end on with this topic.
I will let one of those folks answer that. But I will also add that City Beverly did apply for a grant for, to do an additional parking study through the one, Community One-Stop Program. So with the specific goal being identifying additional parking supply and other ways to mitigate the demand for parking. So, you know, we'll see in the fall if we get that grant. It's kind of a follow-on to the 2017 parking study. Kind of taking a look at it. Okay, so now we understand where the pressures are and the new pressures have been created. So what can we do to help create supply to support our cultural businesses, particularly in the peak times, nights and weekends, on, you know, Thursdays to Saturdays? So that's, that's something we're looking at doing, future study. But that's going to, the long-term, it doesn't address your question specifically, but we do recognize it's a problem.
I was hoping Ms. Nguyen would answer. Could you say it again? I'm not sure I followed, Councilor.
If we're not able to strike the proposal that you're describing?
Right.
And we lose that parking, has the absence or the loss of those parking spaces, talking long-term, not short-term now?
Mm-hmm.
Been incorporated into these changes that we're considering this evening? Or are you still thinking of what's happening there as contingent and would just have to reexamine it, depending on what happens?
I think the latter, and I think, you know, we're trying to find, one good thing is that the study that predated the ordinance work in the downtown parking program did identify, you know, all these different private opportunities where parking is, where privately-owned parking is underutilized during the times when we need it most. So we're working off of that and, you know, approaching all these various property owners. And we'll keep doing that. But yes, you know, if we aren't able to claw back some of those spaces and have an inventory of publicly-available parking on that parcel, it's going to make everything else harder, for sure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Housman. Councilor Rand?
Thank you so much. I guess I just have one more question. Along with the proposed changes, will there be a reengineering or kind of upgrade to the Creamery Lot?
We currently have no plans to do that. We will have to do a tiny bit of concrete work to set the kiosk in place, just because of how it needs to be mounted. There are currently no plans to do any sort of paving or curbing or restriping or anything like that. I mean, the striping is pretty well held up. I mean, everything's easily identified. But yeah, there's currently no plans to actually rebuild any portion of either that lot or the Harbor Master Wharf Lot, any of that. There is some nearby paving that'll happen as part of the Three Intersections Project, but it doesn't really kind of venture into what we're talking about now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Rand. Councilors, any other questions at this point before we move to members of the public? Okay. So for members of the public, there is a sign-up sheet, as you've seen some of your fellow members of the public use, and sign up. I will have Ms. Kent go get that now, so we can start to call on public speakers. But if you have not yet signed up, you can come up and do that now. And I will offer an invitation, even as we're moving through the public speaker time, that if you have not yet signed up, but you would like to speak, you will have the opportunity to. So if folks join us while we're engaged in this part of the hearing, or you just haven't signed up yet, but as people are speaking, you feel moved to speak, you will still be able to. The other thing that I just want to make sure that everyone knows before we begin is that in an effort to make sure that all of our public speakers get to be heard and have the same amount of time, to be fair to everyone, I will ask Vice President Rotundo to keep time for us. Public hearings, we typically do three minutes per speaker. And Councilor Rotundo, do you want to play for us the sound?
Who plays?
Are you choosing a groovy tune?
I don't even know what he'll play. It'll be a surprise to me as well.
Just pick somebody more normal.
I have no idea, I didn't even.
I have a very normal ringtone, if you'd like to meet.
I would love, if you would love to take time.
All right. In that case, thank you, Vice President Rotundo. Passing off to Councilor Feldman, just so that speakers know what it will sound like. Councilor Feldman, will you just play your timer?
Okay, yeah. Let me just do five seconds.
That sounds a lot like my timer. Thank you, Councilor Feldman. So if you are speaking and you hear Councilor Feldman's phone, that means the end of your time. You can conclude your thought, you don't have to stop abruptly, it just, it helps speakers, I find, just to sort of know when your three minutes is drawing to its close. So with that, we will begin with an, I'll apologize in advance if I misread anyone's name.
Just testing him. I guess I'm done.
If I misread your name, I do apologize. And when you go to the podium, as you saw, if you would begin by restating your name and then your address for the record, that's helpful. So our first speaker who's signed up is Isabel Shaw.
Hi, thank you for having us. Isabel Shaw, 6 Milton Street. This is probably just a technicality, but when I was looking at the 18-page parking proposal, there's parking on my street, which was changed from four hours to two hours. There's no parking on Milton Street, on either side. It's a very tiny street, and there's never been parking in the 30 years that I've lived there, so it's probably just a mistake. I want to thank Estelle very much for keeping in mind the Commercial Fisherman, because I have a commercial fishing boat, and this does impact me greatly. Last night, I came in at 8:00 PM, and to have this consideration that at 4:00 PM there's going to be an issue is truly a problem. We leave at 2:00 AM, we leave at 4:00 AM, sometimes we don't come back for 24 hours. If we're selling in Gloucester, we might pull it back in at midnight. It's very variable for us. And so this is truly a big problem. And from what I understood, every spot is going to be metered, including under the bridge, all the way from Rowan's all the way, correct? There's no spots that are not going to be metered in that commercial fishing area?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to, if you'd like to respond, just to help us answer Ms. Shaw's question better, please?
Sure. Thanks, Isabel. So it's a little funky. The state owns the footprint under the bridge, so we can't charge there like we plan to in the Harbor Masters Lot. So the plan with, under the bridge is to time limit during those hours of 4:00 to 8:00 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And when I said that, you know, we're trying to get a meeting together with Commercial, you know, Fishermen and Women and Boat Owners, that's the stuff we need to understand, because we, you know, we want to do no harm, really. So that's, you know, having this, having this language in place is one thing, working with you folks to make sure that it doesn't turn you upside down is what we want to make sure we do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Shaw, just so that you know, Councilor Feldman did not use that as part of your time, so if you want to, if you have more, you have plenty of time.
No, I just, again, I wanted to thank Estelle for being so thoughtful, because I really appreciated that, and I'm sure if other people were here, they would say the same.
Thank you very much. And something I should have said, actually, before I invited Ms. Shaw to get started, to all the members of the public who are here, is thank you for being here with us, whether you plan to speak tonight, or you're here to listen, or to show support for another speaker. It's really important to hear from, to hear from you, and so thank you for giving your time. And I know it's not, I know it's not nothing to come here after you've already had your day, your work, your errands, running around, whatever it is that you've done today, and this is an evening meeting, so just thank you for being here with us. And thank you, Ms. Shaw, for your comments. The next speaker signed up is Teresa Savageo.
Yeah, my name's Teresa Savageo, and I live at 20 Cabot Street. And I'm concerned about the parking for the fishermen, and I think we should have permits or something to park there, at least, for all the commercial persons, because the place was made with a grant, basically, so I think we should be able to park there. And also for permits for all the employees, and I think all the parking spaces for how are they going to go about getting permits to park? The employees that work at the anchor? Is that a question?
To one of the mayor's team, are employees, are those businesses being expanded as downtown businesses where they could get a parking permit? Ms. Chandler, I don't know if that's a question.
Say it again? Just explain how they do it in downtown. We aren't proposing that here either. A employee, right?
So the way the employee pass works is?
Oh, Ms. Chandler, would you, sorry.
I thought it was supposed to be a ding-dong.
Councilor Housman, I didn't know. Yeah, I didn't know you were going to bring the groovy tunes tonight.
That might be put down as an accident.
Everyone wants.
Ms. Chandler, sorry. So the way the employee pass currently works, there is an online portal, you can get through it to, through Park Beverly, you can get through it to a number of places. You log in, you provide your place of business, and just like paste up showing that you are currently employed with that business. You put in your license plate number, and you are granted a business permit. You could buy it in a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, or an annual basis. I don't believe that we were currently anticipating expanding the employee permit as part of the waterfront area, so either the Creamery Lot or the Glover's Wharf Lot, or however we want to refer to it. But that, again, is something that if we do expand the program, the infrastructure exists to allow for it in terms of enforcement and just activating it, but it's not currently part of what we're proposing.
Thank you.
So that means you're not going to make one? Is that, is that?
Not currently.
Like English?
Yes, so not currently, there would be no employee pass for employees that would exist within those three areas of the waterfront parking. If an employee of a business down there wanted to purchase a pass, it would be valid at any of the other downtown parking lots that currently accept the parking program employee passes, but it would not currently be active in the Harbor Master Lot, the Creamery Lot, or the on-street parking against Cabot Street and the entrance to Under the Bridge, which is also Cabot Street, weirdly enough.
Don't you think that's a little unfair?
Oh, Ms. Savageo, will you just direct your question to me through the microphone, and then I'll direct it to them? I, just easier to follow on Bev Cam. Thank you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I think that's a little unfair, because that's the area where they work out of, so. So I think they should have the rights to park around there.
Thank you. It's, and it sounds like from what Ms. Chandler's saying, that that is, the infrastructure's there, and maybe that's something that can be considered. So I think that's an important thing for us to hear from you. Thank you.
I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker signed up is Suzy Lamont. And if you would, name an address for the record.
Hi, I'm Suzy Lamont, 20 Porter Street. Two things. One, I think is just a quick clarification about what you are calling the Creamery Lot. The Cabot Congress, the Summit Congress, those have all been thrown around interchangeably. When I read through this this afternoon, I noticed what I believe to be inconsistencies within the document over the segment between Summit Avenue and Allingwood Court. Sometimes it's referred to as Congress Street, sometimes it's referred to as Cabot Street. I believe it's Cabot Street. Right? The anchor's on Cabot Street, Rowan's is on Cabot Street. The area that connects the two, is that Congress or Cabot?
I can answer that. Cabot comes off of the bridge, passes the anchor, makes the turn into the Glover Wharf Marina Lot, passes Rowan's. There's a small section between the railroad tracks and where Cabot makes that turn, which is Congress. And within, what I did within these amendments is I cleaned up, it was previously mistakenly, that stretch between the train tracks and where Cabot turns was also called Cabot. In speaking with the engineering department, we were able to identify that technically is, that little stretch from the turn to the tracks is where Congress begins, and then Congress continues over the train tracks towards the old, to the new apartments at the old Vantron site, which is, and?
Can you point on this map?
Oh, Ms. Lamont, just direct your question to me.
Could you point on this map? Person next to me. Here's a railroad.
This is Congress. Cabot does that.
This is, so this piece is Cabot?
Yes.
Okay, I agree with you. This lot, then, shouldn't be called the Summit Congress Lot.
It?
It's confusing to me.
And that, that, that?
It's also confusing.
That was named?
That's called the Creamery.
That was named at some point.
Okay.
The way it's, the way that that lot is identified, and this is, this name predates, predates these amendments, is it is, it is, in the past, it is identified as the lot at Summit Ave and Congress Street, AKA the Summit Congress Lot, and historically, it's been referred to as the Creamery, Creamery Lot. So, and to add to the confusion of this, that there's vestigial little pieces of Cabot and the old Salem Beverly Bridge, which used to pass through there, which then, as the bridge shifted, it's?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, maybe we'll just go back to calling it the Creamery Lot. I mean, it was there because the ice cream stand was there, right? Was it Cherry Farm or Cherry Hill? What was it?
Cherry Hill.
Cherry Hill. And that's why it's the Creamery Lot. So maybe that's the easiest thing to keep calling it.
I do not have an opinion on what it is called. I have an opinion on the consistency. And I will tell you, I lived here for, I don't know how, maybe a decade before I knew where the heck the Creamery Lot was. I'm like, where is the Creamery? Dickens Jones? Beverly Farms? You know, nobody, nobody tells new people these things. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out. And when you read through the street listings, too, I would just take a quick look to make sure that those segments, that little segment that I was just pointing out, is called the same thing throughout the document?
Yes, and I can refer to the councils in the early?
Oh, Mr. Dole, will you come back over to the microphone?
Um, in the early, the initial pages of these amendments, the complete package of the amendments, under the parking prohibited at all times, there are some edits in there to correctly identify where on Congress Street parking is not allowed. So I, the amendment, so some of these amendments deal with the downtown Beverly Parking District, that deals with the off-street parking lots, the on-street parking, et cetera. And what this, these amendments do is clean up other parts of the ordinance, outside of the downtown Beverly Parking District, such as the parking prohibited at all times, to correctly identify where parking is prohibited on Congress, which in the past mistakenly in the ordinances, be referred to as Cabot. So the, you know, it had the butterfly effect, so to speak. I attempted to go outside of downtown Beverly Parking District and clean up some, some other, say, ambiguities or mistakes in how some of these streets were. Also, there's a one-hour parking, I did some cleanup with Cabot, what is mistakenly referred to as Cabot. And as certain areas were dragged into the downtown Beverly Parking District, required deletion of where they existed outside of the downtown Beverly Parking District and other parking-related ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Dole.
Thank you. I'm completely comfortable you understand what I'm saying, and we'll tidy it up as needed. Second thing, switching gears completely, electric vehicle parking. I have a concern about turnover in those spaces and rotation through the spaces, and maybe suggest some language in there about parking, the cars that are using those spaces are actually plug-in vehicles and have used or are using the plug-in port equipment. As it reads now, I could just park there for 25 cents an hour and not be plugged in, and that would restrict other people who need charges from getting them. And I'm, just as we're growing as a community and as electric nation, we're going to need those things to turn over. I have that issue out now, I have a plug-in hybrid for four years. Sometimes those, there are cars in the spot that don't belong there, they're not even an electric vehicle in any way. It's a problem if you drive somewhere and you need to get a charge to get home, and someone is basically just using the space as plain old space. So that's kind of, that's, I don't know, it's, at present, it may not be a huge thing, there aren't that many electric vehicles in town, but going forward, we're going to see more, you know that. My second question was, are the EV spots only in, going to be in the parking lots?
How was that?
The EV spots will only be in the parking lots?
And, Mr. Mayor, I know you're, I know you're going to respond to the EV questions. Ms. Lamont, I was thinking, do you have others? I was thinking we might want to finish Ms. Lamont's time, and then we could, you can respond. Oh, in that case, she's done. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Lamont.
Thank you, and thank you, Suzy, for bringing that one up. We have, as you folks know, because you've supported the efforts to secure the charging stations, we put in a number of Level 2 charging stations in, around the community, at some school lots, and then the downtown? school lots and in the downtown lots. We also are trying to be careful to not overdo that because we're trying to track the demand. It matters, right? We found, again and again, people who, you know, without EV cars parking in those spots, frustrated us, and then we looked, and we don't have an enforcement mechanism. So that's in this. And, and yet, I saw an EV car parked the other day in one of the spots. I was so excited, then I looked, and it wasn't plugged in and charging. So we flagged that. What you have before you needs an additional amendment. We talked about that the other day, to say, you have to be an EV and you have to be actually plugged in and charging when you're in that spot. Otherwise, you should be ticketed. So that, that's that. And I think it also bears mentioning again that we're trying to be, and Ms. Keeffe is working on this very closely, we're trying to, we're trying to be thoughtful about putting the right amount of infrastructure out to meet current demand and next demand and not, you know, kind of trying to right-size it in that sense. Also, we do have, well, I'll leave it there. I think that's for now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dole.
And I would welcome a friendly amendment to the, and I can identify the particular two sections that would require it, both in, it would be 270-66, Section B to F, to identify not only non-electric vehicles shall not park in spaces designated as electric vehicle charging stations, period. Electric vehicles shall not park in spaces designated as electric vehicle charging stations unless actively charging. And I can provide Ms. Kent with that language also, which would then also require, under Section 270-63, the violations and penalties, you can see that there's an amendment there, non-electric vehicle, et cetera. I could add an additional violation and the same amount, $20, for electric vehicle parking in electric vehicle charging station space while not actively charging. So I can, if, I would welcome that as a friendly amendment, if the council would like to address that, that not only non-electric vehicles parking in those stations, but electric vehicles parking in those stations while not charging.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. And I think if the council does desire to take that up, it would be helpful to have that language for Ms. Kent. Our next speaker signed up is Danielle Spang.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spang.
Danielle Spang, 16 Mulberry Street. I have a couple thoughts, not on the precise language of this proposal, but more of thinking forward as a downtown resident. I agree with Councilor Bowen that it would be great to encourage alternative ways of getting downtown. Parking's tight. Some things that I've thought about and perhaps would be included, if we get the grant that Planning Director Winn was talking about, would be to encourage some bike sharing downtown. I know Salem has a bike share going on, and/or a shuttle. For the bike sharing, it would also perhaps be very timely right now where bicyclists can get from Ryle Side to downtown. So if we had some bike sharing spots on both sides of that bridge, I believe the way that the bike share works is you can take it for a one-way trip. You don't have to return it right away to the place where you picked it up. So just a thought for that. And then a shuttle running downtown, whether it's owned by the restaurant or something that the city can do, or we can find a private investor who wants to do that. I don't know the, how it could work out, but certainly encouraging people to park at the coming center when it's off-hours and when it's busy downtown, and then having an easy way for them to shuttle into the downtown area and back out for a show or things like that. It's going to be tighter. My other thoughts are, especially if the city's not able to claw back those parking spots in the Family Dollar Lot, it might be worth thinking about whether it's legal for the city to not offer resident passes to people who live in the large multifamily dwellings that have private parking on-site. I don't know the legalities of that, but just something to think about for the future as well. And then my last thought, oh, my last thought was that in a lot of the discussions tonight, it's been talked about the business employees can buy a pass to park in the parking lots. And I just wanted to mention that on page 16 of the proposal that you have, it's not a change, it's something that's in the ordinance right now. It's Section 270-66B, 3E. It's the one with the little E on page 16. Talks about how employees who have the permits to park in the parking lots are also able to park in time-limited zones for longer than four hours. So perhaps limiting the streets to two hours will make some difference, but if we incentivize business employees to get these passes, they'll be able to park in the lots or on the resident streets. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because it hasn't come up tonight, but as it's written right now, they are able to also pass, park on the side streets between Cabot and Rancho. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spang. And then the last speaker we have signed up on the sign-up sheet this evening is Linda Cross. Thank you, Ms. Cross. Name an address for the record, and then you have three minutes to address it.
My name is Linda Cross. I'm at 28 Front Street. The neighbors in our area are concerned with the time limits of the new parking, that boaters are also going to spill over into our neighborhood. We have concerns, obviously, with the restaurant also. So we're looking at what the plan is for our neighborhoods. Anytime it's a busy day, sunny day, the Jubilee spills up into Bartlett, to Front Street. So what the plan is for our neighborhood for resident parking. So that's really our concern.
Thank you very much. All right, I was still taking notes on what you were saying, and you were so, you were so proud. I wasn't trying to look away from you. Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public here who didn't sign up but would like to speak in the public hearing? So seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing so that we can take action on it this evening. It will stay in front of the full council. I did have a question, Mr. Mayor, for a member of your team. I realized Ms. Shaw's question just about her street, Milton Street. I wondered if someone could just speak to that quickly.
So Milton Street is not something that's being addressed by these amendments, but I did see, apparently, when, in 2017, when the downtown Beverly Parking District was created, which is 270, Section 66, and my understanding, that was prior to my time, that the engineering department did retain a consultant to work with the engineering department, and the, excuse me, and the planning, I think it was primarily driven by the planning department, to build out this ordinance. And it does list Milton Street as being a resident-only, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, currently four-hour max, between Cabot and Broadway, which looks like that's the entire length of Milton. But looking on Milton on GIS, it doesn't look like there's room to park there. So I, I'm not familiar with it. I don't, I didn't, I don't know why that was created, why that was included at that time. If it is, in fact, a street that should not be, there should not be parking allowed, I don't know if parking is even...
And you can't. You can't get two cars an hour at the same time.
And I have no idea if people are attempting to park on Milton, but that would be, that's something I'm going to look at with the engineering team. I don't know if there are any problems with people attempting to park on Milton. I don't know how enforcement works on it, but it appears to have been added to the red zone parking back in 2017 when the ordinance was drafted. So that's the first I've heard about it, and I can speak with the rest of the...
The signage says...
Oh, Ms. Shaw, would you mind if, just if you could speak into the microphone? Just because...
And I, I'll talk with Ms. Shaw, and I can put her in contact with the people that actually install the signs.
That would be perfect. Thank you, Mr. Dole.
And, you know, if that's a situation where it should not be included, I can only assume, you know, why it was included back in 2017, but it wasn't something that came up in the context of the amendments that were before the council.
Thank you. And I appreciate you following up on that with Ms. Shaw as well. And Ms. Shaw, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Councilors, are there comments or discussion that you would like to have at this point? Councilor Housman.
Yeah, I just have a question about the, what was raised about parking for the fishermen and their, and their employees. And I think what I have heard, have not heard this evening is that there is not a pass available, and I'm wondering why not, because it seems like that would be a fairly straightforward solution to the irregular schedules that they keep, allowing us to, you know, support, excuse me, support their businesses.
Yes, Councilor Rand. May I make a comment in sort of response to the...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that one, one thing that I didn't say and Councilor Rotundo didn't say so far is that the Harbor Management Authority has been working really diligently for...
Two years?
Yeah, for two years with the administration on all of the parking issues down, put the parking availability, the future changes of the parking down at the waterfront. So I just don't want that to go unsaid, that there's been a solid two years of effort put into some of these changes and a lot of collaboration as well. Just wanted to make sure that was stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rand.
If I may, while we're waiting for a response from the administration, I mean, having served for a couple of terms on the Harbor Management Authority, they do terrific work, and I have no doubt, probably longer than the two years even before this parking, you know, proposal in the restaurant downstairs, downtown in the harbor, the Harbor Management Authority's been working with the, with the commercial fishermen to support them in a very diligent way.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
So I don't know if the right answer for the commercial fisher community is a pass or not. We're going to be sitting with them and happy to have anybody else in the conversation. The ordinance as it reads, without any changes to it, would allow us to do that, so we wouldn't need to make a change to bring it into effect. As Mr. Dole reminds me, that doesn't apply under the bridge, because under the bridge is its own, you know, its own animal. So, you know, as I said, we're, we're trying to get a meeting together with the commercial fisherman community and work through some of these. So, you know, it's clearly one of the things we could do. It has a downside in terms of tying up spots during the times when we want to keep them turning over, but it may prove to be, you know, the best possible step to take. I don't, I don't know, but I think that's, that's the conversation we need to have. But as I said, in the, in the Harbor Master Lot, it's possible to do it with the ordinance reading as it already does. Under the bridge would be a different conversation. At any rate, I hope that that answers at least, you know, where we're at right now.
Yeah, if I may, I mean, I hear that there's been a lot of work put into this. I hear, you know, your, your office trying to reach out to the fishing community. So I would just encourage, you know, and support that, support that work, and can, you know, suggest considering, you know, a pass for them as one possible way of approaching the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Housman. Councilor Rotundo.
Madam Chair, I just want to, may I just make a suggestion to you when you have this meeting with the commercial fishermen? There are a couple of recreational slipholders who actually run commercial business, but because of the phone calls that I've received from three people who actually are on the recreational side, but they are running commercial business, and they did that purposely because of the quality of, they want for the fish, they're accustomed to come through, so there's, you know, one's a charter, one's a dive, another one's a Cito. So they just want to be considered part of the conversation, similar to what the commercial, even though they're on the recreational side. So I just want to bring that to your attention as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Councilors, is there anyone prepared to make a motion at this point, understanding that a motion is second does not end discussion? Councilor Bowen.
Yes, I, given that the discussion is really rich, and I know there was some urgency in scheduling, but that that may have cut off some chance to hear about the work that had gone into this previously and other consultation with neighbors, I'd like to move that we refer this to the Parking and Traffic Commission to advise us on, you know, based on their review, elements of this that can move forward right away, elements that they might advise we wait on, and I'd like to see their review. So I guess the motion is to refer it to our advisors at Parking and Traffic.
Is there a second on Councilor Bowen's motion?
Second for discussion.
Thank you, Councilor Rand. Second for discussion. So discussion on this. Councilor St. Hilare.
Given that it was a late file and the timing and the sense of urgency around the opening of the waterfront, just kind of curious when the Parking and Traffic Commission next meets and at what point we could expect this back from them, and how that might impact, I guess, the urgency of the need.
Thank you, Councilor St. Hilare. Mr. Mayor, I will say on your behalf, this one came to us at a special meeting, was not, it was received on time for the special meeting. So we got it, I think, towards the end of the month, but I want to say in fairness to the administration, this one was not a late file.
I have been fairly traumatized by late files. I'm not...
Me, too.
And just to clarify, I'm not concerned about the late file. I guess I'm concerned about the urgency of the need for parking, given the restaurant opening, so...
Yes, and I didn't hear that as your concern. I saw that the mayor's trauma was...
Yeah, I didn't.
Well, no, it's, I, I just have it, but no, it's, the, where, the Parking and Traffic meeting is currently scheduled for July 12, but we are trying to reschedule it for July 19, potentially. So it's still up for debate, trying to figure out when we can get people to get...
Then theoretically, they would refer back to us, and I don't think we have a meeting scheduled until August.
Yeah, it would go to our August 15 meeting, is my assumption.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor St. Hilare. Other discussion or comments on this? Councilor Bowen.
Thank you. I share that question, and so my understanding was the restaurant would not be opening by August. So I was hoping that since we are scheduling an additional meeting to cover some other late-breaking, urgent business, that that might be an option for us, that wasn't necessarily an option when this was filed.
Councilor Rotundo.
Madam Chair, I know we're talking about right now with the marina and the parking down there, but there are other parts of this ordinance that are being presented as well, which is the City Hall, Greenwood up in Ward 6, as well as the rates as well. So I want to also take that into consideration for time-wise, and I don't know, maybe Ms., or Mr. Mayor, you can address that.
Yeah. So on the City Hall piece, we're already making the parking available. We think it's more appropriate that we eventually bring it fully in and that we charge for it. We don't need to charge for it right now, in the meantime. Making it available is important. And we're doing that. We don't, you know, just opening it up and signing it, we're doing, and that's okay. The, you know, the changes around the anchor and around Lower Summit and Cabot, and not quite Congress, but Cabot, you know, those, they're important, you know, the putting order there so that, you know, people don't get hurt is important. And I will go to Chief Lashar and see if he, if he thinks it's appropriate to, you know, to sign that temporarily, because I think that's an answer. Because the fact that you, you folks feel there's a benefit to referring to Parking and Traffic, I don't disagree with you. You know, we can, we can make it work in the meantime. We've had temporary signage up at Stone Ridge. I mean, we, that can continue in the meantime, so, and you're right, Councilor Bowen, the restaurant, much as they want to be already open, they aren't. So I, am I missing any of the pieces? We can do a temp sign at Judson, you know, as well, if you folks, yeah. So at any rate, I, I understand where everybody's at, and I think it can work.
Councilor Rand.
Ms. Chandler, do you have anything that you would like? Because I know you've been working on this, so really, it's, I just want to get your opinion on it as well.
Well, so the other thing is that from the day that this gets enacted, it's probably, I want to say conservatively, at least, at least six weeks before it is actually on the ground, because I am one person that has to go do 95 kiosks to update them. So it is not an overnight change. We have to replace every single red zone sign, of which there are 85. And I say we, my wonderful colleagues in DPS will be changing 85 red zone signs to now say two hours instead of four hours. Obviously, those won't go up overnight, and we will have the added complication of you parked under a four-hour sign and then came back to a two-hour sign. So we will have to deal with those as they come to. So this is not an easily executed implementation, so again, not to push it. So if it got enacted at the end... So if it got enacted at the end of August, say Labor Day, we're looking at probably mid-October before anything would actually be on the ground, ready to roll and be enforceable.
At least, that's not true for the kiosks and lots.
The kiosks and the lots and the signage, but I can't necessarily order signage until I know that it is approved. So just from a standpoint of wanting to make sure that nothing else came from Parking and Traffic's recommendations that something changed. I would want everything to be accurate. It would be at least three to four weeks to get just the harbor area executed and set, not to mention the campaign of informing everyone that all of a sudden things are changing down there that haven't previously been discussed, as well as just ironing out all these details if we're going to allow for permit parking and enforcement and things of that nature. Also getting enforcement up to speed with what we'll be enforcing down there. So it is a time-sensitive process. Obviously, whichever way this goes, the amount of time it takes to execute it will be the same. So even if you approved it tonight, it's still going to take X number of weeks to get it on the ground and running.
Thank you. Councilor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. Building off of that, just to, for consideration of the council, and Councilor Bowen, I really do appreciate the point that you made as a resident of Federal Street, which is one of the streets that would go from four-hour to two-hour parking. We're, I've heard this from my neighbors on Arthur Street and others, certainly a concern that there is a lack of available residential parking, especially now, given the construction on Pond Street due to the solar panels, I actually heard from one of my neighbors today. So I think that's something that, nutching, it should sway the vote one way or the other, but certainly a consideration in addition to, you know, larger projects such as the restaurant impacting the need for these changes. There are also smaller projects and needs of residents that, the turnover that could be created from going from four to two-hour parking in some of the streets between Cabot and Rantoul is significant, and so we should factor that in as we consider the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sweeney. Councilor Housman?
Yeah, no, I think in principle, Councilor Bowen's suggestion is a very good one. In practice, I know they meet once a month, first Tuesday, you know, 8:30, and having attended many of the meetings, they sometimes go for hours and hours, and there are, I'm going to defer to Ms. Winn on this, because she's probably going to know this better than anyone, and then maybe the mayor, of the composition of that commission, I think most of them are city staff who are already involved in this process, and I guess I just wonder out loud two things. One is, what, if Ms. Winn knows what the agenda looks like and whether or not, even if it were to go by referral to them, they'd really, realistically even be able to take it up? And given the composition, how much input there would be from members on that commission who have not already, already, you know, been very much involved in this process? I think there's maybe one person from Main Streets, there's the chair who's an outside traffic consultant. I'm not sure, off the top of my head, how much additional input we might get from that compared to the, you know, the sort of the various different aspects of the timing of this in terms of wanting to move it along, so.
It looks like Ms. Winn is prepared to speak to that.
I'm hoping.
I am. As to the question of what's on the next agenda, we have the Parking Traffic Commission is reviewing the site plan for the Family Dollar Lot at the next meeting, and also reviewing a follow-on parking study related to the Anchor Point project. That was one of the conditions of their approval related to the Herrick Street intersection, some improvements that they were suggesting, they were required to suggest or do additional research onto, into. So there's two somewhat larger, you know, items that we have on that agenda. I would say hours and hours, maybe not entirely accurate, 8:30 to 10:30, try to keep it under that, but, but yeah, they can get long. So, you know, I think they could handle another topic. Sometimes we also have kind of constituent questions that come up. I don't have any yet. And a note is that we're usually the first Tuesday, which is the day after the Fourth of July, so we moved it to the 12th, but the chair is away that week, so that's why we're trying to move it to the following week, because we have two kind of significant topics on the agenda. So we're trying to find another date. The composition is nine members. There are three city staff. Four, trying to think. Three. And it's, no, it's Mike Collins, Public Service Commissioner, myself, Planning Director, and
Lisa Pye.
Sergeant Hennaberry, thank you, I was trying to pull that up. Yeah. Oh, and Captain Larissy. So yeah, four city staff from different departments. And then we have a member from the Bike Committee, a member from the Greater Beverly Chamber of Commerce, a representative of the ADA community, accessibility community, who'd I forget? Come back, come back. Oh, and the mayoral, George Binns is the mayoral appointee. So, yes, and Richard, you mentioned Chairman Benebento is an outside expert. So it weighs only slightly to the non-city staff, but I understand, I recognize your point, is that, you know, four of, well, perhaps three of the people who are on the committee have already been involved in this planning process. And, I'm good, thank you. And so I do think that the members are generally participatory, all members of that committee. We just have fairly good conversations, so they could have something to add, but I can't speak to necessarily what they will say.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Winn. Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is there is definitely some urgency, and I want to respect that, and that it's, it's not the only option to pass a whole set of ordinance changes tonight in order to address the most urgent needs, that some of them can be addressed temporarily, which I actually think would be really beneficial to give people time to adjust, because part of what's creating the urgency is the amount of road work, the parking lot work, and so making a permanent switch that charges people more in a variety of locations, I think, might be harder for people to swallow than some temporary relief that doesn't impose additional costs at this stage and accustoms people to the changes that are likely coming. Because I think overall, there has been a lot of discussion among some stakeholders, and all of these changes seem like they're headed in the right direction, and if we get them sort of started in less permanent ways, I think we'll actually be more successful in the long run in the behavior change that we're looking for. And it sounds like the timeline could work to have a discussion in the July Parking and Traffic Commission meeting. Since a few members of the commission have already been involved, that might expedite the conversation and allow the Parking and Traffic Commission to really just focus on, are there streets in there that shouldn't be in there? Are there typos? Are there friendly amendments to be made? Are there issues that were raised tonight that hadn't been considered before that can be incorporated before they become more permanent changes and still come back to us in August with that much more time to be laying the groundwork for residents that this is coming in some form to make it more successful in the fall? And I heard from the Engineering Department that implementation is going to be a big lift for the team, and so want to make sure that we're giving you the clarity that you need and not asking you to put up 95 signs, and then in two months, asking you to put them all up again because we discovered something that in a rush to address an urgent issue we didn't cover. So that's sort of my case for, it sounds like we don't lose much by holding on a vote until August, when a few tweaks could be suggested by Parking and Traffic or the Legal Department in the meantime, and a lot of groundwork could be laid with the public by addressing some of the urgent issues through temporary means.
Mr. Dole, I didn't know if you were getting up. You're not getting, Mr. Mayor. And then, councilors, I'm inclined to call for a vote on Council Bowen's motion, and we'll go from there.
As I said, we've already made the lot here available. That can wait. The, the changes that need to happen over at the foot of Summit and along Cabot and there, I'm going to ask chief whether he, you know, whether he's comfortable doing them as temporary emergency measures. That, so that we'll see if that, you know, if he thinks that rises to that. The ability, the ability to ensure proper use of EV charging stations is in there, and you can't, we can't do anything about that. The change from four hours to two hours, we can't do anything about that. You know, I, you, I have mixed emotions because I hear and understand your point about going to Parking and Traffic. What Ms. Chandler said is true, but I mean, whenever you folks act, we'll then order the equipment, and the rollout will be the rollout. So, you know, I, like I said before, I'm good whichever way you go with this, and I understand your reasoning in either direction, so that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, councilors, we have a motion and a second on Council Bowen's motion. All those in favor of her motion to refer to Parking and Traffic for their July meeting? One, oh, one, two, three, four. Why can't I count? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? All those opposed. So the motion carries seven, two. So we will, with that, refer this, Order 181 will be referred to Parking and Traffic Commission for their July meeting, on the assumption that it will return to us for our August 15th special meeting. Councilor Housman?
If I may, request the administration to provide in writing, just to make sure, the requested friendly amendments, I think there were three of them, two relating to EVs, and then there was a third one I didn't quite catch, so that we have that in writing, so that we can refer to it and be prepared to vote on it when this does come before us.
Thank you, Councilor Housman, and I think, Mr. Dole, you had made that offer to get that language to Ms. Kent, so that would be, that would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Could you mind going to the microphone?
I just wanted to add one more comment. If there wasn't so many bump outs in all these streets, there'd be a lot more parking.
Thank you. That's a big topic, and I appreciate, I appreciate you, I appreciate you adding that in. Thank you. Councilor Feldman?
I have one question that I probably should have asked before, prior to the voting, but given, do we have any reassurances that this will be able to get on the agenda for, can we vote at the August 16th meeting? Is this an agreement to vote at the August 16th meeting regardless of what the Parking and Traffic Commission ends up, if they're not able to get it on the agenda, or if they're for some reason not able to meet? I just wanted to make sure that we were voting at our August 16th meeting on this issue.
I think now that we just voted to refer it to Parking and Traffic, we can't vote on it until it comes back to us from Parking and Traffic. Although I will say, it sounded like from Ms. Winn that she felt fairly confident, I don't want to say she's all the way confident, that another item could go on the agenda. I don't want to speak for, it will be on the agenda, yeah.
I think the Parking and Traffic Commission will be appreciative that the council, you know, deemed that they should, they should get to look at this, and we'll make sure there's a meeting. Everybody has vacation, but there's got to be a day that works for enough of them, right?
I figured. I just wanted to dot my i's and cross my t's.
The only thing I would say to that is, I don't think we have the authority to authorize them to take action on it, so, you know, it's kind of in their court at this point, right?
I agree, Councilor St. Hilaire, agreed. So when they refer it back to us, then we'll be able to take action. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting is tomorrow.